... fifteenth, sorry, November now, Thanksgiving soon, November fifteenth meeting to order. If you'll please, all board members are present, if you'll please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just, are there any agenda modifications the board members have? Good. My report is fairly short, just to update everybody on a couple of issues. One is, we have been in communication, mostly staff has been in communication with the city regarding the new campground that's over on Jefferson. And Mr. Burris is well aware of how, what the district's position is. Dr. Snodgrass has been communicating frequently and been quite in the loop on it. And it's, I think, in the circuit court's hands at this point. But we've heard of no incidents, I guess, and things are quiet. But we, as you recall, many years ago, four or five, maybe, we had a resolution when the Larry Rice thing first came up, and if we need to dust that off and send it around, we can. The other thing is, I would like to ask Dr. Ritter and administration to, we talked a little bit about MSBA policy and using that policy review service that they have. And you could perhaps look into that and give us a report back. And I think several of the board members have raised some questions about the policies KG, E, and KG, KB, or whatever, regarding the facility used by school groups. So I think that's clearly one that we would like some, to be revisited and some review brought forth to the board.
We're planning on doing that, and we'll turn that around rather quickly, so.
That's all I have, go ahead.
Okay. A couple other things, if I may, as far as a report. I was in Field Elementary today, and unbelievable how that primary years program has matured. And the vocabulary of the children in the classroom is unbelievable. It's really something that's to behold, and so I encourage any of you to visit the primary years program at Field. So, Mr. Hosmer, eventually your daughter will have that level of vocabulary once in about three or four more years. No, she should have it already because she's one of your children, but anyway, or they are your children. But either way, I was very, very impressed, and I think that's a feather in the hat. But anyway, the other thing I want to mention is that last week we had an opportunity to spend some time with an expert on processes. And Carolyn Telasek spent some time with us, four days, and with the top leadership. And really, a lot to be learned, but we're all exhausted, we're still exhausted, I think. But we have focused on certain initiatives. But in light of that, I'd like to have Mr. Manis approach the board and talk a little bit about where he's at with strategic plan, but also maybe even get into a little bit of the conversation we had, or he had, and his team had related to action plans tied to strategic plans, so. Mr. Manis, please.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. We did spend quite a bit of time last week focused in on process performance management, as you are aware, and very excited about how that will play a part into our strategic planning process. And just as a reminder, we take a quick look at where we are currently with developing the prototype of the strategic plan. We have three areas that we're focused in on currently with the district goals, student preparation, effective use of resources, and teacher support. Under each one of those categories, currently we're testing these four indicators. As you recall, we have goals, indicators, and measurements that we work on. Student engagement, academic achievement, rigor and expectations, and postgraduate readiness under student preparation. Effective use of resources, we have market competitiveness, resources, supporting classrooms, safe and healthy environment and learning environment. And then teacher support, these four areas, professional development, administrative support, instructional time, and community support. So each one of those indicators will have a series of measures, actually probably more measures than we've ever had in past strategic plans, just to kind of give you an overview. For instance, market viability or market competitiveness, there's a whole number of areas that we'll take a look at in terms of how we're going to measure our effectiveness in that area. So what we've been, I think, successful with in the past in our strategic plan, this is just another example under student engagement, is, I think, providing excellent direction with our goals and indicators. The action plans are the areas that really make the whole strategic plan happen. So just as a visual, these are how they tie in, but the action plans are the foundation of how we're going to achieve the goals set forth in the new strategic plan. It also happens to be the area I think we needed probably the most work on in terms of development. And what we were able to do in the workshops last week with PPM is develop a team that will focus in on the action plans, mainly the process that we utilize as a district to develop those action plans. So along with Dr. Hackenworth, we're going to work on that as a team. We'll develop a template using the PPM approach that can be utilized for all action plans. So just to give you an idea, the types of action plans we'll be developing using that template from the process management, facilities plan, digital vision plan, learning model, innovative programming plan, SPS choice, budget plan, activities and athletics plan, anything that we consider the major component, the action plans that drive our system, will be developed along with the process, the template we're developing now with our team. When that's completed, we'll obviously bring forth to the board the plan that has been tested. By the way, the action planning will also include something that was reinforced with the PPM training last week, voice of customer. So Ryan Van Viber and I will be working on getting stakeholder input with the action plans, including information on bonds and the budget planning process. So the next step is, we obviously develop the action plans utilizing the new skill set. We're going to work with Carolyn from PPM to do that as well, or APQC, I should say. We'll develop the action plans and then a dashboard that will be also prototyped and tested with the public, and then board approval by no later than June 2012. We might even be able to bring that earlier if it works out. So I wanted to share this with you. Once we do finish our goals, indicators, and measures, we're working on developing a dashboard that will look something like this, that I think is an easy-to-read visual check for our stakeholders to see all the key areas. I've actually put that one together based on our existing strategic plan, but obviously the new one would have a new set of measures and indicators. But that would be updated on a monthly basis or on a regular basis, depending on when the data was coming in, that would impact the strategic plan. But we hope to make sure this is on our webpage, obviously, and of use at our board meetings as we discuss different programs and their impact on the district, that it's a visual we can see where we stand at the current moment regarding key measures and indicators. So that's all part of the planning process. I think we're in good shape in terms of testing the prototype, getting a lot of feedback. The next step will be the action plan. Well, certainly, that's when you'll see probably the broader, city-wide voice of customer activities that you're used to seeing from us, which will be surveys and opportunity for public to give input on those types of things. So be glad to answer any questions. Did I tie in enough with the understanding of how PPM would impact?
That's what we were looking for. Any questions? You might, just the other processes we were looking at. One was the evaluation, staff evaluation, and we had a team working with staff evaluation. We had a team working with, we moved it from budget process because it was too broad, and we really targeted facilities and a facilities plan and what that would look like. And then also, we were looking at the energy, manager, energy efficiency plan. And then, of course, then the other one was action plan. And then one other one was really tied to program evaluation and how we will approach program evaluation with evaluations approaching the cabinet and eventually the board. And we'll have those conversations as we move through that because that involves a board as much as any of them. So just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that. And then a lot of, what was kind of interesting with the training is that we, because we are a continuous improvement Baldridge system, we were very, very familiar with quite a few of the tools that were used, for instance, the FISH diagram, the consensus gram, number of the things that came forward, we were used to and comfortable with, and so that helped a lot. The thing that we did find out, we do find out what children or students go through, sitting from eight o'clock in the morning till four in the afternoon, about two o'clock it's over. But anyway, and so I think our school day really can't go any longer than it does from, I think it confirmed from eight to 2:30, that's about it. But we found that to be the case in our situation. Yes. Now, another thing I want to mention is that we, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. The kids' first initiative is still, is proceeding rather well. And in fact, tomorrow I'm meeting with the food people who are really in charge of the pantries, the food harvest, providing food to families of need and the homeless. And we're bringing them to the table, and we're going to have a conversation about what kind of hurdles are out there as far as being able to get food to families. It's kind of interesting, there are a lot of turf issues to deal with there. And I really do think it's really, everybody's sincere in providing, and by turf issues, I just don't think they're aware. And so hopefully we can resolve some of that, but then ultimately go back and meet again with the larger group in December with the strategy and plan around a real sharp focus on food. As I was going through the APQC last week, I was thinking, we are taking the right approach with this, because basically you are bringing all the vendors, all the customers to the table that have a hand in supporting our families and our children, and having a conversation and collaborating, and eventually deciding on what really to focus on. And that's what they're, and that's what we're doing in the first kids' initiative. So I see it starting to grow because we're getting more and more people at the table that are interested. So I don't think a week goes by where Kathy doesn't get a call wanting to be a part of that. And so I do see that continue to grow. It's interesting that that does go hand in hand with the newsletter and their efforts around bringing awareness of needs of children. And their efforts, I think, have been really very focused as well and very direct. So I want to thank Claudette, Claudette's a part of that, and she's also working with us on the kids' initiative, so I want to thank her for that. So that's all I have, I can't think of anything else, so.
Well, I suspect, I speak for other board members, when we are hearing praise for your leadership in the kids' first issue, when we're around town at different organizations, I think all of us have probably heard that they're glad you're taking the leadership and that we're backing you up on that, so.
I'll remember that, that you're backing us up.
We're backing you, yeah.
As far as that, appreciate it, thank you.
I don't think we have any public comments, nor do we have any information items. You'll notice on Board Docs the two action items we approved last time. Section eight, action items for separate consideration. I think Mr. Choudas, you're up first.
Thank you. You know, in looking at this action item, right away it says under separate cover. I think technology has eliminated that under separate cover. We have it posted on Board Docs, but we'll have to change that next year. For the 19th year in a row, this year's audit is unqualified, we're very proud of that. It should be noted that less than 3% of the school districts in the state of Missouri use the accrual basis of accounting and are thus in compliance with generally accepted accounting procedures. At this time, I'd like to invite to the podium Mr. Al Kirchhofer, who's president of Daniel Jones and Associates, our independent auditors.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Dr. Ritter. As Steve mentioned, this is the unqualified report. This is the seventh year Daniel Jones and Associates has performed the audit, and that we are issuing an unqualified report. What that means in teacher language, you got an A. That is on the financial side. There's three parts of the report. There's the financial statement side, there's the state compliance, and the federal compliance side. On the financial side, unqualified report. On the state compliance, on budgetary and attendance and transportation, completely in compliance, 100%. And on the federal compliance and federal awards, your internal controls were there for federal programs, and you were in compliance, and there was no findings for the federal awards. Congratulations. Any questions?
Is this a common finding with audits, other school districts that you audit?
Yes. There's usually, we audit 25 school districts in the state, and if we don't find something on the federal programs, it's usually unusual, whether they didn't put it on the CIFA schedule or they didn't spend the money appropriately. So, yeah, you guys, for the size of districts, amazing, especially with what you guys had going on with two audits, basically, couldn't get enough audits, so you had to have another one. I really want to thank Steve and John. I mean, it's amazing that they were able to get the stuff in a timely manner, and it was, it was a great, great audit.
Practiced.
Yeah, practice makes perfect.
Any questions? Ms. Callen.
Yeah, I would like to follow up on that statement about how much staff time goes into support not only this audit annually, but then this extraordinary audit that was brought on by some petitioners last year. And I'm going to be very interested in knowing just how much staff time went to support
I would imagine our audit was probably maybe 150 to 200 hours, the state audit, I wouldn't even want to guess. I don't know how many man-hours, you probably had a year's worth of man-hours. Don't guess. Yeah, I mean, it was, our audit's a financial audit, the state audit's a compliance audit, so they can keep looking at stuff over and over and over, and it's, there's a lot there.
And I guess what I'm just trying to say is, you know, we pay you to do this, and it's well worth our taxpayers' money. You know, we are going to have to pay the state audit to fulfill that obligation, but there's also hidden costs in terms of staff time and.
Yeah, off balance, you don't see that it's taken up the time of the staff. Like I said, it's amazing that these guys were ready for us the way they were in light of what they had been going through their last nine months.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a statement?
You certainly may.
Use this opportunity. When we, when I first came to the district, I think the annual audit cost was anywhere from $100 to $120,000. By shifting reconciliations, year-end journal entries, and financial statement preparation from the auditor staff to the finance, in-house finance staff, the current fee is $28,000. So, and I'd like to thank John Effest and the finance department for another excellent job. They, you know, from essentially July 1, for two months straight, they work on getting things prepared for the independent auditors. Thank you.
And I would take a motion that the board approved the 2010, 2011 audit as prepared by Daniel Jones and Associates CPAs. This is twidded and seconded by Mrs. Callen. And 8.02, I think, Mr. Choudas, you're up again with the tax anticipated notes financing.
At the October 18 meeting, the board authorized administration to solicit proposals from lenders on tax anticipation notes. An invitation was sent to 24 potential lenders. The district received four proposals qualifying for evaluation. The proposal that the district is recommending is from UMB. That is at a 0.9% fixed rate with $2,500 in closing and documentation fees. I believe that's the same rate, is that the same rate we got last year?
Slightly lower.
Slightly lower, okay, even better. The tax anticipation notes will be repaid from tax receipts in January of 2012, and at this time, we're asking that the board accepts the UMB tax anticipation note financing proposal and adopts the resolution. Any questions?
I would listen for a motion. Mrs. Callen.
Second.
By Mr. Lee. Let the board accept the UMB tax anticipation note financing proposal dated November 1, 2001, and adopt the attached resolution. Do I need to read the whole thing, do I, Ms. Lut?
No, thank you.
Yes. Thanks, Steve.
Be nice to be able to get that kind of interest on a house.
Yes, wouldn't it? Could we tag on to that somehow?
Or a car or something.
Mr. Wint, you have utility, oh, sorry.
I was still thinking about it.
Thinking about that rate, huh?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present the easement for Roundtree Elementary. This is a standard utility easement, as we have seen in the other, both air conditioning and construction projects. The district would receive the sum of $100 if this easement is granted, and it is the recommendation of the administration that the board would approve the easement as written.
Any questions for Mr. Wint? Mrs. Twitty made the motion to approve. Mr. Renner seconded, the board approved the utility easement to CU of Springfield for 1333 East Grand at Roundtree School. Thank you, Mr. Wint. We have several routine action items that we may approve as submitted. Mrs. Callen, and a second by Mrs. Dr. Frederick. I was going to call on one of you. Let the board approve the action items as submitted. Not yet. Mrs. Lutin said that it has to load each one of these items individually, so that's why it's taken a while to do the electronic vote. But it really helps her minutes if we sit patiently.
They're so attractive.
Yeah.
We could discuss whether to approve it.
Nope. That works.
There we go.
So the minutes came up, and we'll each.
Each of the action items.
Me?
Very good, thank you. All right, and where are we now? Where at? General consent items.
Maybe we just go, mine came up as, I was just voting on the minutes.
You know, and that's been a problem because I've tried to do it on the consent thing, and for some reason it won't let at the bottom. So I'm going to have to go to a specific agenda item and then a penalty.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, yes.
And then you can, yeah, all right. So general consent items.
It's going to come up just personnel, but it's going to, it's going to do all of them.
Okay, so I'd listen for a motion that the board approved each recommended submitted by the administration of the general consent items. Mr. Renner. Mrs. Callen, thank you. Very good, thank you. Again, no comments from the public. Legislative report, I think we have a few things. Mr. Lee, why don't you start off? Yeah.
Couple things on more local. Everything mega-tax is going, I know the chamber's meeting tomorrow to hopefully hear both sides to, I think, to make a decision on what stance they're going to take.
Or they're going to vote, they're going to take a stance, you think?
They will, at some point, they're going to hear both sides, and they do that before they.
The government committee needs to make a recommendation.
They have to make a recommendation as a committee, then it goes to the board, the whole, it's a very lengthy process for the chamber to do that. I think the Missouri chambers is in the process of opposing it, too, so. So I know the newspaper's also getting ready to, I don't know what stand it'll take, but I know the editorial board meets with several of us Thursday morning to address the tax and meeting with Mr. Moody and some other people. So hopefully we'll see some coverage on that over the next couple of days and see how that's going. What I was really going to talk about was a conference call I had Tuesday on the federal level of what's going on, of which a lot of people wonder what's going on, including them up there. But there's some things I thought were kind of interesting that maybe you want to bring up. First one, dealing with the Department of Education NCLB waiver, which the first round of requests were due today, which Missouri didn't turn one in today, but they're supposed to turn one in in February. That's my understanding, is the commissioner's going to turn in a waiver request for that in February. So we'll see how that goes, and the only good thing about that is the 2014 100% compliance thing's gone. So that's a positive thing, we're suspect of that. But other than that, there's a whole lot of activity going on with the SEA, the reauthorization bill. In that whole thing, the Senate's got some bills that's out there that will be going to the floor soon, and really, I just was going to mention three things that they're really, really focusing on. One is expansion of charter schools. There's real effort on their part to expand charter schools. The third, the second one is accountability, really focusing on accountability and teacher effectiveness. Those are really the three issues that they're really pushing in Washington with this whole reauthorization bill. Don't know where it's going to go, don't know what it'll look like, but they're really going after that. One of the other things dealing with funding, which I thought was interesting, is there's a proposal in the House to increase the Title I by a billion dollars and increase IDEA by a billion dollars, House Committee, and they would take that money from the current race to the top innovation, the grant money that's out there now, and put that money in those two programs. The Senate is totally opposite of that. Leave it where it is and keep the grant money. So we'll see how those two fight it out when it gets down to it. So certainly NSBA is supporting the first one for funding of the two initiatives and getting rid of the grants. Lot of, lot of stuff dealing with deficit reduction that may impact us, dealing with tax codes, things like that, which I didn't think about until, but it could have impacted bonding if they become taxable. Some provisions for taxable for public education bonds. And so they're fighting real hard to make sure that none of those will impact bonding capacity, or bonding availability for public schools. But they're talking about possibility of seeing a $3 billion cut in education at the national level, so don't know what's going to happen there. There is some discussion about the internet tax, though, which I was kind of happy to see. According to the numbers that they were talking about, that's almost $23 billion in revenue for states if they would just implement the internet, internet sales taxes. So I, whether that will happen or not at the national level, I don't know, but I know there's a lot of discussion right now locally. One of the other ones that I was interested in particularly was the, and I know Mr. Hosmer's had some discussion about this, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, the whole child nutrition discussion that they've been wrestling with that was passed back in December, and I guess there's a whole lot of discussion about that. Then I just saw some things today, some bills going through that was proposed yesterday, late yesterday, basically taking, gutting the whole Department of Agricultural standards that they had proposed on child nutrition. that they had proposed on child nutrition before. It was back to, if you've got a half a cup of tomato sauce on a pizza, that's a vegetable. That's where we're heading back to, the way it was when we tried to convince people that ketchup was a vegetable. And so, I don't know where that's was going to go. I know there was definitely some issues with respect to funding because there was going to be some increased costs for districts. I think it was somebody I had read was 14 cents increase in cost, and we were going to reimburse six out of that. So, there was going to be some additional cost to us as a district for that. So, I don't know where that's going to fall. It's kind of a circus, I guess is a good way to put it because, but they are talking about some mandatory standards for all foods, not just cafeteria. Foods, classroom foods, PTA foods, you know, party food, whatever. Whatever it is, they're trying to create standards for all of that. So, I don't know what's going to happen. But there's also a lot of discussion on wellness policies, that they're really pushing wellness policies. And I think we're probably ahead of the game a little bit on some of that compared to other schools as far as wellness. So, a lot of activity, particularly in the spring. I know Mr. Renner's participated in the Federal Relations Network Conference in the spring, which is in February, which will, should be a fairly active process for us to be talking to our federal legislators about these issues because nothing's going to come to head probably before that. So, it'll be a lot of items to discuss in spring. But who knows? It's election year. Don't know what's going to happen.
Jerry, you done?
Yeah.
I had a question for you. I've read, you read that some states are pulling back their requests for waivers from no child left behind because of, I think, financial.
Strings attached.
Strings that are attached to getting the waiver. You know what those are or are likely to be and what disadvantages that, what disadvantages those may have to asking for the waiver?
I honestly, I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Hosmer, as far as the specifics. I know that the commissioner and the state board were looking at that really hard to see what strings were attached and see if, you know, is it really worth selling out, sort of speak, to do that as to what it's going to cost us to do it? So, I don't, I have not seen unless, like, have you seen any of the?
I mean, is it just a money?
I've heard the same thing you have, that some of it's.
Is it just a money issue? Or is it, it's a requirement, I think, and unfunded mandate or?
Yeah.
That's what it is. It seems to be more controlling than a waiver. Should be. You think a waiver is where you step away, but I think there's a lot of strings attached to it.
That's my understanding. It almost increases federal control.
It really does.
Than giving us the flexibility to do what needs to be done at the state level. But I don't know what all those mandates are.
That's what happened with race to the top. A lot of the states that got race to the top got a lot of requirements that came with that and just killing them.
And just so our patrons don't get confused, this is different than the waiver we've asked for.
That's a good point, yes.
Anything else?
I just remind you, Thursday reception. This is something that Pam, she here, Pam Bodine, did the work on this. And so, put this in your billfold, pocket, purse, whatever. Anyway, and so, bring this, no, we'll have it for you again on Thursday. So, just a reminder, it's four o'clock here in this room, okay? And we're expecting a pretty good turnout as far as legislators. At least over half of them will be here.
Any other legislative issues anybody's heard about? Future issues? I don't think I have anything. Or other issues? Got to stretch this out a little bit.
This is just an update. On Thursday morning, I will be on a panel at the Good Community, what do they call it? Team? I'm going to be giving the report from the education side of the community report card. So, hopefully, we'll be able to share that information with community leaders and people who are keyed into what's going on in this community and try to tie the needs between those different areas of focus of the community report card to really start to try to identify some targeted areas for philanthropic or maybe a community kind of joint grant to a larger foundation or something like that, so.
My name is Ms. Callen.
Eight o'clock at the chamber.
I had the privilege of serving on one of the grants panels for the Community Foundation, and we did some challenge grants to different community organizations. $125,000 was granted with the provision that by January something, they raise, each organization raised matching funds. And I think those were totally targeted at the community focus report, so. It was good.
The only thing, the other thing that I have for you is I think the Wolf Program's going to move into new facilities over the winter break, and I tell you, that's going to be something.
I bumped into Mr. Morris. He's very excited, and he wants to make sure that we all see it. He will show us around.
Oh, yes.
Told him I would, hold him to it.
Oh, you bet.
Yeah.
As long as you don't have to hunt any turkeys or?
In a deer camp right now.
That's what I thought.
Well, and I think there was a, there was an article in the paper today about NIXA and taking a step towards choice within their district. And I think that, to think about what we started to discuss, you know, maybe a decade ago with introduction of IB diploma and then building on that, I think it's really starting to ripple out into, you know, our surrounding communities, and that's only going to help all children. So, I think that that, again, shows this community's leadership regionally. So, I was excited to see that for them.
The other issues. We, remember your financial operations report is included. Your plus deltas are, can be posted, and we have no executive session. So, nothing else to accomplish, I can believe.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll see you all tomorrow, Thursday night here, Thursday evening. Yes, Mrs. Twitty made the motion to adjourn, and.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Doesn't require a second. All in favor, aye. I don't think we have to vote to adjourn.
I didn't think so either.
Thank you all very much.